Good evening. I'd like to call the July 5, 2017 Longmont City Council Meeting to Order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak at final call, publicly invited to be heard. Hey Valerie, are there any other agenda revisions?
No, Mayor Coombs, there aren't.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Christensen.
Last week, at the very end of our city council meeting, I was shocked to hear a council member read selective parts of an email that, in his words, had been handed to him. I had not received a copy of this, and I was under the impression that no one else on city council had received a copy of this. This council, this, he was not on the original list of recipients, and he did not ask the sender for permission to read this aloud before the entire town. The city councilman did also not ask for permission to reveal the private citizen's private email address, nor the private email address of one of his fellow council members, which he did by demanding that this document be entered into the public record. He directed city staff to draft a letter to this HOA. Months ago, council agreed that we would not use the council comments period section of the agenda to do this. We would not bring up a topic of discussion, make a long elaborate discussion of it, make motions and directions to staff, all of this after most citizens have left the council chamber. The time to do that is at this period of time, at the beginning of the evening, when people are here. And then it has to be brought up as a topic for future discussion with the email in question to be distributed to every council member so we know what is being talked about. This email was about nothing we were discussing. It was solely brought to us as a personal attack on a fellow council member. This is prohibited under Roberts Rules of Order Section on Rules of Decorum, which is our system of council order. This was followed by two more male council members piling on the attack based on an email they had not seen. Specifically, one accused his female colleague of using her private email to respond to citizens. The actual email was sent to her private email, and she simply responded in four short sentences by redirecting the citizen to city staff in the appropriate departments. Hardly nefarious. City council is elected by the public to represent them.
You know, Paulie, this part here says, "Agenda revisions and submissions of documents and motions to direct city manager to add agenda items to future ..." That's what we're talking about right now.
Yes, but perhaps we should bring up a discussion for future topics on what rules we live by. I have one more statement to make. City council is elected by the public to represent them and make wise, thrifty, and rational decisions for the good of the community. We are not elected to waste time and taxpayer money with political grandstanding and public harassment.
Okay, I would like to make a comment on, I'd like, there's a group that sent me an email, it's called National Fitness Campaign, and they build these really neat fitness courts, and they, you know, they're going to provide 50 grants of $10,000 to 50 cities, and then they come in, if you're granted a grant, they come in and they help you fundraise with, you know, your local health centers, or Kaiser Hospitals, or whatever you see health, and help you raise, you know, like $20,000 to $30,000. And the cost of this thing is total about $90,000. So, at that point, we can make a decision whether we want to do that, but I would just like to get councils' okay to at least do the first part and fill out the three-page simple application, so if that's okay with council to do that. And there's a really neat YouTube video, I'd like to direct staff to show that at a future council so that everybody can see what we're talking about. I've also got information about the maintenance of one of these fitness courts, and it's pretty minimal, it's well under $1,000 a year, there's no moving parts. So, anyway, I think we should at least take the first step and see if we can get the grant. So, if everybody's okay with that, then I'd like to give a nod to direct staff, too. Is everybody okay? Okay. All right. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just have a suggestion. Can we possibly raise our hands when we are agreeing rather than nod our heads? Because several times, staff has been saying, "Does everybody agree?" Because, I don't know, it might have a tremor. So, let's raise our hands, please.
Okay.
Does everybody agree?
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there a report from the city manager?
Mayor, council, last week, there was a discussion regarding LHA and having a conversation with them about a status update. I will let you know that I did have a chance to meet with Michael Reese today, and what he told me was that they have an executive session tomorrow where they're going to be discussing that topic, and that he will provide council with a more detailed status report within the next week, and so, seven days. And so, I just wanted to report that based on the council's request.
Okay. Well, now, it's time for first call, publicly invited to be heard. Do we have the list? Okay, first on the list is Patrick Fitzgerald.
Hi, my name is Rick.
Okay.
Oh, hi. Hi. My name is Rick Fitzgerald. I live at 419 Emery Street in historic Eastside neighborhood. My wife, Paula, and I have given you a letter requesting your vote for a moratorium on development or redevelopment projects within the future transition zone areas of historic Old Town Longmont. I spoke to you a few weeks ago about a proposed new office building at 422 Kimbark Street, a couple of hundred yards northwest of these council chambers and across the alley from my home. This project plans to scrape two 50-foot-long, 11-foot, and 14-foot, one-story buildings and replace them with 100-foot-long and 3-foot-high office and retail building. The current application for the Kimbark Street redevelopment is on track to obtain approval prior to the soon-to-began municipal development code update. Since it's not requesting any variances, it would obtain an approval by staff without the benefit of the code update or any public hearing. Main Street buildings range in height from 18 to 48 feet, and all buildings in the historic downtown are half the proposed width. The proposed building height, scale, and mass will dwarf, will dwarf something of the other buildings in the area. Main Street buildings range, oh, okay. The proposed building will dwarf the nearby buildings and does not, in our opinion, provide any kind of transition to the historic Eastside neighborhood. We are aware that there have been many discussions of a transition zone to meld-depending historic downtown district with the adjacent historic residential neighborhoods. We understand that this is to be discussed with the upcoming development code updates. The transition zone would likely step down building heights to blend more suitably with the historic residential districts and require architecturally suitable detailing. We believe the code update should proceed and run its course prior to any project like the one proposed on Kimbark Street. It seems backwards to have this important discussion follow a project approval of this scale. As a builder, I know that the proposed structure will likely last 100 years or more. Should a structure of this permanent be hastened through the approval process when a code update of this very subject is so imminent? Or should we look more closely at what we all want for our vision of Longmont? It's downtown and adjoining neighborhoods. There is but one chance to get this right. Please vote for a moratorium on all new redevelopments within the future transition zones, which would include Kimbark, Kaufman, and Terry Streets that include a change in use, height, and density. Thank you.
Okay, Paula Fitzgerald?
Hi, my name is Paula Fitzgerald, and I live at 419 Emery Street. I'm here tonight as a concerned neighbor to the Kimbark Street application that my husband just mentioned. The Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan was updated just last year and is the primary document that helps guide our vision for the future growth of our community. But currently, the comp plan is out of sync with the municipal code and, in particular, the Development Chapter. The planned code update will begin soon and will align its requirements to the vision of the comprehensive plan. Some of the vision statements in the new comp plan include 1.3, maintain and enhance the character of established neighborhoods; 1.4F, ensure development or redevelopment is designed to be sensitive to and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood context, providing transitions in height, scale, mass, and intensity; and in the Growth Framework Chapter, range of density scale, that development abutting lower-intensity established residential neighborhoods should provide transitions in massing and heights. Before any permanent structures are built, we feel it's critical that this code update be allowed to move forward to align with these vision statements. If not dealt with properly, a tangle of unrelated and conflicting uses and inappropriate heights and architecture could result. We're making a simple request to you to put all redevelopment where an increase in height, scale, user density is proposed within the future transition zone areas on hold until this part of the code update can be completed. Those transition zones, again, will include Kimbark, Kaufman, and Terry. Thoughtful visioning of our future-built environment is imperative to encourage a vibrant downtown with intact and thriving adjoining neighborhoods. A short moratorium will allow needed planning discussions to move forward while being only a small hardship to this and other pending applications. If not put on a temporary hold, this development will very likely become the new de facto standard referenced by other redevelopments. We're asking council to not allow the tail to wag the dog. Let the code be drafted, discussed, and debated before allowing any redevelopments in the transition zones to be moved forward. And I just also wanted to say that I think the speculation and water is, it should be modified to not be on the backside of the current residence to the extent that it's currently proposed. Thank you.
Mike Chamberlain?
Oh, by the way, guys, I mowed your yard for you again today. Please don't try to stop me from doing this, because, what's it called here, the same thing I've got, be careful what you wish for. Okay? Oh, by the way, my name is Mike Chamberlain. I live at 518 East 16th Avenue, Longmont, Colorado. Mayor, council members, in regards to the city's agreement with the citizens of Longmont to designate the Greenway adjoining the Sundial subdivision to the same standards as is on the south side of the ditch in 2006, do you, number one, do you accept or deny, on August 25, 2006, in our meeting with Mayor Pernak, the Director of Community Development, Mr. Del Vecchio, also there were Allison Kanepa and Dick Anderson and myself, that in that meeting, the mayor agreed with us to designate the sundial side of the Greenway to the same standards as the side, as the south side of the ditch? Number two, do you accept or deny, from the information I have given you so far, that it reveals an unwilling director committed to not fulfilling the mayor's word, but, to us, but rather going off on his own or by the way of city management instead of the mayor's agreement with us, all the while leading us to believe this was settled a long time ago, all the way through today? I'm very confused here. Could you tell me what a mayor's word has anymore? Just tell me that, and help me with that one, too. Ethics and morality, legality. Can you explain this appearance of a bait-and-switch scam deceiving unsuspecting homebuyers for more than 15 years between city management and the developers they worked with? Number two, may I ask what happened to the funds from the parks fee added to the City of Longmont utility bill? Did that money go to fixing the Greenways? And if so, why then did the city go on and double up on a failed experiment? Do you accept or deny management soon after or during our ordeal, during our ordeal, began a campaign to undermine our efforts continuing with these practices to mislead the citizens of Longmont on how wonderful dry land habitat trails through our city would be? Deceit. Was any information of our plight revealed to these, in these decision-makings? I have been warned a few times from different staff members to be careful what I wish for. To me, and in its context, I would consider that a valid threat, or, no, a veiled threat.
Once the red light goes on, your three minutes is up.
And I venture to guess that I'm not the only one who has heard of this before. In a recent meeting, I asked this council-
Excuse me, your three minutes are now up.
-for an independent investigation into this matter, and since I haven't heard anything new from you, now, as a citizen-
Could you please take your seat?
...I would like to make a request or a plea to a federal body or a county-
Could someone turn this mic off?
...to this body to intervene in this matter. I am also asking for whistleblower protection for myself and anyone coming forward in this matter. Thank you.
Hermine Nicomar?
I'm Hermine Nomir, and I have my name pronounced a few ways, but I think you're going to take the lead. I'm actually going to yield my time tonight, because there's some other people who can talk better about windy gaps, so thank you.
Tim Waters?
So, is this turned back on? Yeah. My name is Tim Waters. I live at 1139 Winslow Circle in Longmont. I've been a resident of Longmont since 1994. My wife and I moved to Longmont for a number My wife and I moved to Longmont for a number of reasons, but one of the big ones was our belief that Longmont was well-led and effectively managed. And I have to say, over the twenty-four years we've been residents, that belief has been validated over and over again, as we've observed the city manage... how the city's managed and how the council does its work. So I want to know... want you to know we appreciate as residents. One example of effectively managed, in our view, is in 2012, when the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan was completed at that point, and the last part of that plan being recommendations from your water consultant and staff to purchase 6,000 acre-feet in the Windy Gap project to satisfy the requirements based on real data in the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan. And it's my understanding that now with Item 11A on your agenda, there's the possibility that this council will make the decision to acquire sixty-six percent more, two-thirds more, storage capacity than your council experts recommended to you and your staff recommended to you in 2012. I think I understand the data upon which the council made a decision at the time to raise my water rates by nine percent over a period of time. If you make the decision to raise my water rates and others in Longmont by eighty-four percent to acquire 4,000 more square feet than your own staff recommends that you need, I believe I deserve to know the data upon which you make that decision and the criteria. Because to date, as a citizen, that's pretty opaque to me. I... as I've tracked this project or tracked this discussion, it appears that there is no data from your staff or from experts who know the plan and know the needs to raise... to increase by two-thirds what the city needs to satisfy our growth over the next forty years, and you're going to put the burden of that cost on the backs of those of us, now one of those in this community, on a fixed income. So as you approach Eleven Item... Eleven Item 11A, just know that I and others are watching and waiting and listening to hear what the data are of the criteria you're going to use if you make the decision to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Now we have Marilyn Hughes. And she'll be followed by Todd Williams.
Am I on? Yes. Marilyn Hughes, 1126 Fourth Avenue. I've been a resident of Longmont for forty-five years. I've been coming to council a lot over those forty-five years. Mayor and council members, I'm here tonight to ask questions and state my concerns regarding Windy Gap water project choices. Why would the careful planning over the years of our water staff and other water professionals is a recommendation of six hundred... six thousand acre-feet being ignored and ten thousand acre-feet being looked at favorably? Why would an increase of ten thousand acre-feet be acceptable when water rates would also increase substantially? Why would council not want to consider residents who would be economically damaged by a large increase in water rates with no specific reasons for the choice? You can never have enough water is not a specific reason. Does not our comprehensive plan indicate that six hundred acre-feet is enough to achieve build-out in our community? Why have a comprehensive plan if we don't follow it? Does anyone on council have a concern for the water flow of the Colorado River? Our state's lifeblood. What about conservation of water in Longmont? And why would this level of water buy not encourage a possible change of ordinances that would allow water to be sold for fracking? These are questions that I would like answered, and I personally consider this level of water buy profligate on many levels. The reasoning is not transparent and makes me wonder why ten thousand acre-feet is really being considered. I believe this decision bears more scrutiny, and I am against a water buy of ten thousand acre-feet. And personally, I think this should be on the ballot for residents to decide. Thank you.
Todd Williams. No clapping, please. Go ahead. Go ahead, Todd.
My name's Todd Williams. I live at 1521 Orion Place, and hopefully my timing's good for my public comments here. I'm going to give a little background and perspective from the Longmont Water Board on why we're recommending ten thousand acre-feet of storage in the Windy Gap firming project rather than six thousand. Staff, as was mentioned previously, suggested six thousand acre-feet in the Windy Gap firming project would meet Longmont's build-out water demands. The problem that the Water Board has is that the water supply numbers included in that six thousand acre-foot recommendation include water supplies not owned by the city of Longmont. And it's Longmont Water Board's opinion that those water supplies should not be included in the water supply projections when you look forward. If you remove those supplies that are not owned by the city of Longmont, the four thousand acre-feet going from six thousand acre-foot of firming up to ten thousand almost makes up for the difference if you remove those supplies. So our recommendation is long-term supply should only be... should be limited to water supplies that the city owns, not supplies that are in trade agreements or any lease agreements. In terms of the reasons for, you know, looking forward for the city of Longmont with their water planning, of why we recommended the firming project maybe over other water supply options to add yield to the water system? The first is low cost. The Windy Gap firming project is part of the lowest-cost strategy for Longmont to meet its build-out water demands. It also allows Longmont to fulfill and fully utilize, or better utilize, its Windy Gap water that it's paid for for almost thirty years now. It's low risk, and the timing of it fits. This project has been on the planning... in planning stages for almost twenty years, the Windy Gap firming project, from the time they started pursuing a permit to the time you're going to have one drop of water in that reservoir. So if you start saying, "Let's look at other supply options to meet our long-term demands," keep that timing in mind. It may take twenty years to get another project onboard. So if you're trying to say, "Let's wait until the development comes and then build it," it may take twenty years to get there. And then the last piece, I would say, is high quality and redundancy within Longmont's water system. The Windy Gap's water comes through the CBT project. It's high-quality, and it adds redundancy to Longmont's water system, which, if you look at the 2013 flood, I think redundancy was an important thing to the city then, and it will be in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Roger Lang.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council. My name is Roger Lang. I live at 800 Briarwood Lane in Longmont, and I'm here to talk about the Windy Gap firming project. First of all, I appreciate the four options that were offered by staff tonight, particularly options A and D. Those are options that we haven't seen before, and I think they were needed to give you a complete picture of what we may want to choose for the right decision on Windy Gap firming project. I'd like to briefly discuss both options, A and D. First of all, A, which, as you know, requires a vote of the people. This is a fully bonded option of purchasing ten thousand acre-feet of water resulting in a higher rate increase than I believe would occur. Part of the cost, I've been told, was due to a debt service coverage because of the large annual debt payments. This option turns out to be one of the more expensive of the four options being considered tonight. So I looked further, and the other one that I wanted to concentrate on was Option D. And this option resulted in being the least expensive option simply because less acre-feet of water is being purchased than the other three options. The other three options were purchasing ten thousand acre-feet. This option purchased eight thousand acre-feet. As you know, staff stated that six thousand acre-feet's adequate for Longmont's build-out, eight thousand feet is more than adequate, and ten thousand acre-feet is simply not required. The bottom line is, the more you buy, the more you pay. The question that I would hope goes through your mind is, how much water do we really need to purchase? I'm sure questions you ask yourself every day, whether you're buying a vehicle, groceries, et cetera, "Do I really need it?" And the answer generally is, if you don't need it, you won't buy it. Hopefully, this analogy carries over to the decisions you'll be making this evening. If you vote for what's best for your ratepayers, those who are your constituents, who voted for you to act on their behalf, you will choose Option D, eight thousand acre-feet, which will more than provide an adequate amount of water for Longmont's build-out. Thank you for your time.
Next, we've got Matt Napier.
Mayor Coombs, City Council. My name is Matt Napier. I live at 1972 Amethyst Drive in Longmont. Thank you for your time and also for your patience in dealing with sometimes uninformed public. I include myself in that category as of a week ago. I'm here to clarify some of the issues that have arisen since the May 2 vote to rezone the parcel at 95th and Pike Street. I wrote the email that was brought up to the council's attention last week. My wife and I... my wife was concerned that it could have been altered somewhere along the way before it got to the end recipients. We verified that it was not. That email was exactly what I wrote and what my neighbors received. It was a summary of a meeting we had with Councilwoman Peck, who answered my original email on the topic and agreed to meet with us at our house with about twenty concerned neighbors. There were a lot of strong opinions in the email. Some of those were mine. Some of them were those of my neighbors, and some of those were from Councilwoman Peck. There was a lot of misinformation in that email, most of which was mine, some of which was my neighbors', and some of which was Councilwoman Peck's'. The email was an accurate description of the meeting. I spent the last week or so speaking with Harold Dominguez and Eugene May for about an hour, a developer I know in town, Councilwoman Bagley, a newspaper reporter from the Times Call, and now the wonderful folks on City Council. These were all firsts for me and all very informative. My questions and issues regarding the rezoning process have been pretty much been answered. I learned that city code dictates a thousand feet for notification. I'm not sure that's sufficient for rezoning petitions, but we can take that up later, especially ones that impact several neighborhoods. I learned that the city traffic engineers are on top of current traffic patterns. Probably should have known that one already. It's typically a reactionary process, as it is in every city in America, so don't have a lot of complaints there. I learned that city code dictates that developers pay for improvements to any traffic impacts near their projects. Some of my neighbors thought it was the other way around, where they offered to pay for improvements in order to get their projects approved. So another thing I learned. I learned that some of the recent apartment projects that have been approved were zoned commercial use and could have had a Costco or Sam's Club or Walmart or something like there with a major traffic impact. So apartments were actually a lesser traffic impact than what could have been there. I have one remaining question, and that is the report that was written or commissioned on affordable housing. I think it said two thousand apartments. We've got... we've exceeded that number at this point, so I need to know when we stop. What's the endpoint? How many is enough? And that's my question, and that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen Dyke.
Mayor Coombs and council members, I'm very concerned about the Windy Gap firming project, so I'm asking you some questions to clarify why we are doing this. In 1986, Longmont received permission to add 20,000 acre-feet to Union Reservoir. Why haven't we done that? What is the cost of doing that? Is that not being considered because of the high chance that Union Reservoir will be contaminated when they frac there and leave the water forever undrinkable? Is Longmont planning to sell the extra water? I know that Platte River Power Authority has already asked the city of Estes Park to release them from first right of refusal so that PRPA can sell their water shares. It seems that we may be paying for the infrastructure for this water storage project, but the benefits will be going to further development and an industry that is known to use an excessive amount of water. In case you missed my question here, is there any guarantee that none of the water in this new reservoir will go to support fossil fuels as they invade our communities? I doubt it, since we know that Greeley already not only sells water to the fracking industry, but in the past has let them fill up their trucks at the town water hydrants. How many residents might be aware that our increased water rates may benefit fracking and that other members of the Windy Gap project will likely be selling that water even if we don't? When I discuss moving to renewable energy, I'm told that our rates are so low that the people of Longmont would never support renewable energy unless it's guaranteed to be much cheaper. Why then do you think that raising water rates is acceptable? If the current projects that move water from the Colorado River to the eastern plains are concluded as planned, the Colorado River will be at about twenty percent of its historical flow. In other words, it will be a river in Grand County so depleted that it will be an ecological disaster. Is your assumption that no one in Longmont cares what happens to the wildlife in Grand Canyon? What consideration has been given to ways to conserve water? As our climate warms, it will be not just hotter, but drier. Is there any concern that water sold to the fracking industry is so polluted that it has to be injected deep into the ground and is forever removed from the water cycle? Finally, the bills will, over time, double. Do you really think that people who live here want bills to increase so that we can support further development and may also be used to support fracking? I know I don't want that. At a minimum, please consider a bond initiative so that we can vote on the matter. Thank you.
Christine Hildebrand.
Mayor Dennis Coombs and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I'll make it pretty short. I... my name is Christina Hildebrand. I live at 1400 First Avenue in Longmont. And I'm actually wanting to speak to something that's dear to my heart. Being of Scottish ancestry, I'm very thrifty. And when I see that we have to water our lawn with drinking water, it just kills me. And when I think about people in the world who don't have drinking water and look at how we look at water as kind of this disposable thing in our minds, it really bothers me. So what I would like to talk about briefly is the concept of gray water. And you may not be familiar with gray water, but what it is, is using a portion of the water used in residential, commercial, or industrial building projects that is then collected after the first use and put to a second beneficial use. Whenever you gather water in a bowl in your sink and you throw it on your plants, you are using gray water. And so gray water comes from bathroom and laundry room sinks, from bathtubs, showers, and laundry machines. It does not come from toilets and urinals and kitchen sinks or dishwashers or non-launder utility sinks. The state of Colorado in 2013 created some legislation called Regulation 86. It's called a Gray Water Control Regulation, and then they adopted that in 2015. This legislation made gray water an opt-in program for local jurisdictions and not a statewide program, but the state created a format for how to implement it in your community. And those guidelines are published by the Water Quality Control Commission and are available for your perusal if you are interested in that. Gray water has been used, of course, throughout the centuries, but also in modern times, it's been used with great success in Japan and Australia and California and lots of other communities around the world. So I'd like to ask, is Longmont ready to be a little proactive about conservation efforts and take the obvious next conservation step of implementing gray water in new construction but... but also in existing, um, residential areas and commercial areas? So you may have, uh, received a little piece of paper there. At the very bottom on the back of it, there are two websites that you can refer to, um, that show you how gray water is used around the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and council members, Paul Hildebrandt, 1400 First Avenue. I guess, um, I wonder, has the city, has the city planned well enough? Do we have enough water? I know in my case, I've been encouraged by the city employees to, to use drinking water to irrigate my land. We have four acres, you probably know, and also traded water shares, which the city is happy to rent to me, but I can't access the water. So I really, just from a gut level, I don't want to pay, uh, 84% more for my water. I hope that makes sense.
Good evening. John Caldwell, 1315 Longspreek. Um, I'm a member of the Water Board, have been for some years. Usual disclaimer, these are my opinions. These are not, do not reflect the opinions necessarily of the Water Board. When I see Todd make, up here making compliments, or making comments, um, I really feel good about the future of our community, because to have young people like Todd involved, um, I know Longmont's gonna be, is in good shape. I wanted to repeat something that Todd said, is that the Water Board has, um, a difference of opinion on the supply and the staff. Going back to Tim's question about 2012, he's correct, but we've looked, in the last five years, we've looked at this, and we disagree. We have a different opinion on the supply side, for the reasons that Todd mentioned, that we do, there's some of that water we do not own. It's, it's a wonderful deal, it's, it's, it's worked really well, but we do not control when that, those arrangements come to an end. Therefore, the Water Board doesn't feel that, that that should be in the supply number. Hence, the confusion, the difference of opinion between six and 10, but that's, that's the reason, between six and 10. Up to the lady asked, the Union Reservoir Expansion Pumpback is a more expensive, at this point in time, it's a more expensive option than Chimney Hollow. That's why we feel like we'd like, we want to participate in Chimney Hollow, um, to the extent we can, because it's our, it's our cheapest option at this point. And, as you know, we're not leasing any water to, um, for fracking, and we cannot sell any, according to charter, we cannot sell any water, any of our water rights. Um, I know there are people, actually, majority of these people in this room, um, including myself, the water rates are not going to affect the way we live. There is, there are people in this community who struggle every month to pay their utility bills. I think we, those are, they're two separate issues. I think we need to be creative to try to figure out how, the homeless issue, helping people that are really struggling. As a community, we need to be very creative in coming up with solutions. But we also, in case of our infrastructure, need the best, make the best long-term decisions for our community. Over the last, over 100 years, councils and citizens of Longmont have brought us with an infrastructure that is the envy of, of northern Colorado. The reason we have, we have a low base water rates today is because of previous decisions that councils have made that provided with that for us. Thank you very much. Good luck with your deliberations.
Thank you, John.
Teri Benjamin, I live at 621 Gay Street. Um, and I guess, you know, I'm here really not to talk about the project, you know, and think about this 6,000, 10,000, 6 million bucks, bonds, whatever. It's just take a minute and focus on that individual, whether it's a senior, or a single mom out there trying to make a go of it. Um, and, and think for a moment what that means at the micro level, because all these long-range plans, all these big conversations ultimately translating to, how are people doing out here? And I really see a missing link in the thought process, in the analysis that's done on a lot of these efforts that increase fees, costs, of, from the city, whether it's rec fees, or water fees, or any other kind of things that are going to go up in time while incomes stay flat, increase this pressure on households. And your policy analysis, John's a friend, but I would disagree with him. I think the policy analysis has to be two-fronted. It has to take this long-range macro view, but it has to be run through the filters. What does that mean for that individual in our community that's struggling? As you know, I think there are a lot more of them, there are going to be a lot more of them, what's going on. I took a look at that little rate chart at the bottom, gave my glasses on, of the memo that staff sent out, the attachment, and the difference in 2018 between scenario C and D, 10,000 feet, $6 million bond, 8,000 feet, $6 million bond, is $44 and $36. It's eight bucks. Not much money, but you add that eight bucks times 12, you add that 12 times eight to other things that are going on, and it becomes real money for a lot of people. So I think from a policymaking perspective, you have to couple the macro and the micro impact in order to really do your job. So that's my encouragement on this issue and on other issues as you go forward. Good luck.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council members. Sherry Malloy, 2113 Rangeview Lane. I've lived in Longmont 31 years. I've got two subjects to comment on this evening. First, along with many others, wearing blue for water tonight, I'm concerned about Windy Gap relative to the significant increased rates for residents and unnecessary 10,000 acre-foot proposal. The burden on our elderly, disabled, those on fixed incomes, and working poor is especially alarming. We've got an affordable housing crisis, and this compounds the problem. I'm hoping you will dial this back considerably to the 6,000 feet city staff recommended to be sufficient for our future needs at build-out. There is rumor that the excess water you approve might be used to sell to oil and gas for fracking purposes. I realize there is an ordinance against doing so, but like city councils change, ordinances can also be changed. Please do write by us. Secondly, sadly, I want to comment on last week's city council meeting comments at the end of the meeting. I watched the tape and was very disturbed. Just minutes after Councilwoman Peck answered Councilwoman Santos's request to cover his shift for his July coffee with council, Councilwoman Santos repeatedly accused her of breaking the law, simply because she used her personal email to respond to a constituent. Although the city attorney explained there was no violation of the Sunshine Law to attend a meeting, all three male councilmen prolonged this drumbeat. Leading the charge was Councilwoman Bagley, who, joined by Councilwomen Santos and more, continued to, thank you, belabor the issue using inflammatory and accusatory language based on one resident's impressions. It really sends me that our city leaders would conduct themselves in this manner. Public shaming is a cheap shot and has no place in this body. That said, I apologize for my harsh comments tonight. I recognize that when people run for office, they feel exposed and vulnerable. It's difficult to put yourself out there in a challenge, not to take things personally. I am publicly pledging tonight to do my very best to keep this election clean and refrain from ugliness. Longmont is a beautiful place to live, work, learn, and thrive. It serves no, no one for us to stoop to the mudslinging and damaging tirades we see some of our leaders do nationally. Let's take the high road. I promise I will, and hope you do too. Thank you.
Sherry O'Leary?
Sharon.
Sharon, excuse me, Sharon O'Leary. You're right.
Oops, I just lost my notes. Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council members. Thank you for your service. The city of Longmont was established in 1871 by a group of businessmen out of Chicago who sold shares to create a new town called the Chicago, Colorado Colony. The original plan for this site included a downtown area surrounded by residential neighborhoods and three parks. For 146 years, the city of Longmont has proudly honored this site plan until this spring. For the first time, the residential neighborhood on the 400 block of Emery Street is threatened by the raising of two pieces of property on Kimbark Street and being replaced with a three-story building. The dividing point between downtown Longmont and the residential historic East Side neighborhood is the midpoint of the alley between Kimbark and Emery Street. The entire western side, the entire western block of the 400 block of Emery Street is completely intact. Homes date back from 1910 to 1920, but actually could be built before 1910, but due to a fire in the records department, what they did was they just started dating all homes 1910. So some of those homes could be larger, I mean, older. These homes have been carefully restored to ensure that the future generations can enjoy Longmont's heritage and have an understanding of Longmont's history and the original Chicago Colony. On the eastern side of downtown Kimbark is 420 and 422 Kimbark Street. Presently, there are two one-story buildings that were built in 1963, and they're owned by the Longmont Area Realtors. The Longmont Area Realtors have turned in plans to build a three-story building with parking in the rear. This new building's scale size is in complete disproportionate with the residential neighborhood that it abuts up to. It's also just larger than other buildings in the downtown area. The impact of this building and the loss of, the impact of this building is loss of privacy in the yards and homes on Emery Street. There is also the loss of solar light. A secondary problem is that the alley will now take on a street function by, um, the increased traffic created by parking in the rear. The long-term residential homeowners are having their quality of life and safety compromised. This building sits in a downtown area that has been declared historic as well as a creative district. This proposed building is neither. It's a big box. With the soon-to-be-released Envision Longmont zoning updates, I would like to ask city council to put a temporary moratorium on buildings that are up but up to the transitional areas in the original Chicago Colony. With both the historic East Side neighborhood and downtown having a national historic district, this will allow thoughtful planning to happen through the Envision Longmont Plan. Please allow future Longmont citizens to take pride in their heritage through thoughtful city planning. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jim Robey, and I live at 478 Greenwood Lane. Have lived here for many years, I don't remember how many. This is only the second time I've been at council. The first time was for a zoning change on the east side of town where I live, so that a Safeway store or a grocery store could be built over there. That lessened the pollution in the city of Longmont, because my wife didn't have to stop at that Doggone Railroad stop every time to go the other side and burn all that fuel, put it in the atmosphere. Now, this being the second time, I think it would be under the Windy Gap proposal, you've got to have a creative way to solve that problem rather than increasing my water rates by 83%. I think it's irresponsible. Thank you.
Dido Clark?
Hi, yeah, my name's Dr. Dido Clark, and I'm 534 Baker Street. I'm Chair of the Historic East Side. I'm here to talk about 420-422 Kimbark. About 50 very unhappy residents went to a meeting at the Longmont Association of Realtors back in May to look at the unveiling of the plans. They were very unhappy. Um, so I see the outcome. There's only two scenarios for this. You can go along with that plan, and it's three stories high, it's as tall as the Dickens Opera House, it's as tall as the tallest buildings along Main, and taller than a lot of them, which only averaged 31 feet high. It brings about a lack of privacy, blocks solar access, turns the alleyway into a street, it lacks historic sensitivity, it's smack back between two national historic districts, and it has no historic sensitivity whatsoever. It ignores the intent of the comprehensive plan, and it adds to our already considerable parking problem. As you're probably aware, at least 50 residents are very unhappy right now about the proposals from lower downtown parking study around diagonal parking. It's being fiercely opposed, my emails, it's jammed, my phone is jammed with objections to that. So there's already a problem, it's all related. Scenario two, you can take the big view, you can have a moratorium for a few months, you can take the guidance of your own consultants, Clarin and Associates, they're basically saying, Terry Kimbark and Emery are poster childs for a transition zone, they're perfect candidates. So, um, along with carefully crafted and graphically designed, uh, design guidelines that are not open to interpretation, it's crystal clear to everyone, from developers to neighbors, we know what's going to come. They're no surprises. We can have historically sensitive input along these streets. They can be of sensitive scale, and they can have integrated parking. So it's all taking the big view here. And if you go with scenario two, I can tell you, you're going to make a lot of neighbors in the historic East Side very happy, and you're going to create a Longmont for the future that everyone's going to enjoy. This is the big view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council members, Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive. I find it unfortunate that participation at the 6,000 acre-feet level from Chimney Hollow is not one of the options you are considering tonight. That is the level recommended by professional water engineers who spent years analyzing at what level the city should participate in Windy Gap storage in order to have sufficient water to, at build-out of the comprehensive plan. 6,000 acre-feet is also what your long-serving professional water staff recommended some 15 months ago. As of this date, not one council member has ever given a reasonable explanation or justification for burdening the residents with user fees high enough to participate at the 10,000 acre-feet level. And I do not believe we have ever received an adequate answer for the question, to whom are you planning to sell the excess water? Of the options before you tonight, I believe D is the one you should select. The 8,000 acre-foot level should satisfy, satisfy those who want to speculate in water futures, but most importantly, it protects the residents, since it will not require rate increases above the already in place. How your decision impacts residents should be a major concern when you are forcing them to pay for more water storage than is justified based on professional engineers and planning staff. Impacts on low-income and fixed-income residents is critical. I hope you have all are familiar with this Longmont Human Services Needs Assessment conducted by Corona Insights in 2016. On page 12 is a summary of important services of adult needed, important service needs of adults and households within of adults and households with income less than $50,000 per year. Number one need, affordable housing. Number two need, help paying utility bills. Number three need, help pay for food. I find it unconscionable that you would even contemplate forcing these residents to pay huge rate increases for water you know the city does not need. Every one of these individuals with these needs, they need water. I believe it is critical that you select the option that best protects your current water users since you are preparing to ask them in November to support a multimillion-dollar bond election for public facilities and to approve a substantial sales tax increase for public safety services. With the wrong decision regarding water rates, you may lose substantial support for November ballot issues. And finally, since I have a couple of minutes, Todd Williams made the point about that the Water Board considered things that the staff did not consider. I just think it's important for you to know that staff is not operating in some type of vacuum over here, not considering every one of those issues that Todd Williams brought out to you. They're all part of a large portfolio of water resources that has been considered by staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Strider Binstone?
Strider Binstone, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I'm glad I heard this presentation about the water issue. I haven't studied in great depth, but since I only have Social Security to live on, water and electricity are a very high proportion of my total income. Eighty-four percent is a lot to go up because I often find, fall behind already. And as was mentioned, even though it may be illegal right now for the frackers to steal that water in the future, I think that's in the works, that they will take it by the tens of millions of gallons. We are facing a constitutional crisis right now as our federal government is, according to the, apparently the new President Steve Bannon, who has just come back, the deconstruction of America. He called it the American bureaucracy or something. The State Department has been defunded by 31 percent. USAID is almost destroyed, we have no influence over our allies or with our allies. There was a world survey at the end of Obama's presidency, 64 percent citizens supported him, and now 22 percent negative on our current president. We, the EPA had Scott Pruitt attacked the chief of the Science Board of the EPA and ordered her to change her testimony before Congress, the destruction of science, and now we have the chief of voter suppression in this country, Chris K. Colback, who is demanding a national registry of voters so that you can find out who might vote the wrong way and get rid of them. The only survival we have aside from challenging that is to strengthen our local democracy and build it back up. I think this debate tonight is very crucial, and I think we need to hear the citizens and look into what are reasonable and necessary water supplies rather than creating more thousands of acre feet for the frackers to poison and destroy. Thank you.
Ron Gallegos?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You've got a rather large issue before you tonight, it's bigger than a breadbox. This is why you earn the big bucks. Really, it's a critical issue for our community because what we're really talking about is the future. Water unfortunately is one of those things, it's an insurance policy you don't want to buy, but you don't want to miss the opportunity. I think we have to be thoughtful in our approach. I encourage you to have further discussion, I think you're doing a good job. I was struck by the person who had mentioned conservation because I think that's one of the things, whatever we do, really needs to be implemented. I think we should seriously look at water demand pricing structure. Those people who use more water should pay for the water. Seriously, we also need to be looking at using gray water, and that's what really should be used outdoors, in the yards, in parks and whatnot. Thirdly, there's an opportunity to really encourage future development to implement zero escaping. This is a high desert we live in, every drop of water is precious. For those reasons, I think there's some elegant solutions that will help us in terms of conservation, in terms of demand pricing. Finally, I would agree with former Mayor Lang that option eight probably is the most sensible. It's kind of splitting the baby, six and 10, the compromise is eight. Good luck with your mission, thank you for your service.
Okay, that ends first call, public invited to be heard. Now we're on to general business.
Mayor Coombs, your only item on the agenda tonight is the Windy Gap firming financing options. I believe Dale is going to start this presentation off.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Dale Radamaker, General Manager of Public Works and Natural Resources. Tonight, we are once again going to bring forward the issue of the financing and the options on the Windy Gap firming project. We did include some additional information in your packet. I asked Ken Houston to give you a little bit of the additional background on the project itself and the sort of the timing of where the project is, just so we're all clear on that. We also put into the communication some additional information on things like the firming ratios, which start getting into the math thing of, you know, what is that firming ratio and how does that work when we start looking at the project? I think we also talked a little bit about the water demand evaluation study that was completed in 2012. That study identified the build-out water demands of the city to be about 32,700 acre feet, which it also then identified a course of action to achieve and reach that water demand need. And again, that water demand is based upon the comprehensive plan, it's based upon the different water uses by different types of customers, whether they be industrial or residential or so on. And again, all, I believe the wife's saying is that all of your master plans and utilities should support the vision of your comprehensive plan, in other words, to achieve that comprehensive plan. I did, you know, we also put in some information about the Union Reservoir Pump Back Project. That, if you remember, and I, forgive me, I don't believe all of you were probably on city council when we presented the 2012 study, which is why we tried to put some of that information in here. We did have that information, however, in the March 2016 packet, which was, seemed like an eon ago, but on the Pump Back Project, that's one that certainly is a viable project. In fact, we are underway with design, a portion of it has been installed. All water supply projects have their pros and cons, is what I'll say. You know, the pro for Windy Gap project is that it's high-quality water, it does diversify our supply, it sits above us so that we can, you know, deliver it into our system, we can integrate it into the system, into the treatment plant. Those are all good things. Conversely, a project like the Union Reservoir Pump Back Project, which can be used and phased, it can be a phased project that's built to certain levels. Some of the benefits of it are that it allows us to reuse water supply as well, it allows us to reuse water out of the Union and deliver it initially in the first phase for outdoor irrigation. I think you heard from the public tonight on some of those issues of, let's not put too much drinking water or treated water to irrigate with. And you know that's been our policy for decades, to try to use raw water for irrigation of our golf courses and our parks and as much as we can. So we still have opportunity to continue to do more of that, if you will, and to exchange additional water supplies. And John knows that I admire him and have known him for decades and consider him also a great friend, as I do with Todd, and I think they explained it well. We do have a different perspective on some of those issues, and I've said it at the podium before, reasonable people can look at the same data and come to different conclusions. I do believe in the case of the PESCO exchange, that it is a viable water exchange, and again, it's, we're not just getting water from PESCO. It's up to 5,000 units of CBT, but we're delivering to them an equal amount of fully consumable water. And so in the event that that agreement were to be terminated, and again, it can only be terminated on 15 years' notice, and so you have 15 years to replace that supply if that were to occur. And certainly, the city is going to have to be paying attention to that, whoever's here. Todd will be here in 75 years, I won't be. So whoever's here then is going to have to be diligent in looking at that because, you know, water supply is a complicated thing. What I would say though is, an example would be the Union Pump Back Project could come on in that timeframe and, you know, meet some of those needs, but I don't want to belabor that, I want to get to the issues that we, you asked us to come back to. And I took pretty copious notes, we looked at the videos, we tried to do what you wanted us to do. And so we do have some additional financing options primarily in the form of bonding options for the project. And we also came back, as you requested, on financing options for the 8,000 acre foot participation level. We are looking for your direction, again, on which of the options you want to go through. And so scenario A, and again, I don't want to belabor this hugely, but it's at 10,000 acre foot of participation, it's bonding at a $36.3 million bond level. And essentially what that is, is we are bonding everything except for the cash that we would get out of the raw water fund and out of the water acquisition fund. And those are two very restricted funds that can only be used for water supply purposes. So that's the concept behind that, is that you would zero out those accounts, you would use as much of that money as you can, and then you would bond the difference. And so that's what that option does. Scenario B, again, is at 10,000 acre foot level. In this case, though, we're bonding 18.8 million, and essentially, that is bonding the amount that would be coming out of the water operating fund, in other words, the portion of the project that is supported by water ratepayers. There's, you know, there's the portion coming out of the acquisition fund, a little bit coming out of that raw water, High Mountain Dam Fund, and then out of the water construction fund. So that's about an 18.8 million dollar bond issue. Scenario C is the one that we've talked with you quite a bit about, that's, I think of that as sort of the cash one, where we increase the rates, as we discussed both in '17 and '18, and then council, you would issue by your own action and vote, which you're allowed to do under the municipal charter, 6.1 million dollars in revenue bonds. And then finally, scenario D is 8,000 acre foot participation level, and that also has you issuing that 6.1 million dollar bond. So before I go any further, any questions about the scenarios, and then we're going to look at the rate impacts associated with each of them?
Well, I have one question. Everybody keeps bringing up this 84 percent increase, but we weren't given the data in a timeline across 2017, if we just did the 4,000, to actually see mathematically the cumulative sum of that number. I just, to me, the 84 percent doesn't seem like a real number because, you know, it depends on, a lot of people don't understand percentages and how they multiply year after year after year. And anyway, I would just like to, I mean, we're not going there, but I just, it seems like that's a piece of information I'd like to have some time.
Thank you, Mayor. And other questions? I don't know if you have a question or if you're just making a statement.
Yeah, I'm just making a statement. Yeah, 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 it's my question. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Dale, let's talk about the water exchange. So 15-year notice for termination, so it can be terminated.
Correct, by either party.
By either party. So I'm, and, so I understand where the Water Board is coming from as far as having control of the overall water future for the city of Longmont and not, as we've seen with other contracts, that this party can terminate, this party can terminate. I look at the auditorium, for example, we were in a partnership with the school district and they terminated the contract, now they do the whole thing. So, and as other residents have said tonight, I'm not sure PESCO's, how they, what their board is or what have you, but boards can change and that nature, and it's that, that's kind of the big question mark. One of the big question marks for me is that 15-year notice for termination, because if, after 15 years, if we try to go out and find water to supplement the 6,000 acre feet that staff had originally requested, we could be paying more later on for additional acre feet. That is a scenario. So now I, it's, had that discussion, and I look at members of the Water Board, that needed to be a little bit more clear. The reason for the discrepancy between, yes, professional staff, who we look to all the time, but we do disagree, council has disagreed with staff before. We also disagreed with boards and commissions, which happens often, but had that been a little clearer, I think there'd be a little bit less confusion about.
If I could, Councilmember Santos, you are bringing up that issue, and I, a couple of things to keep in mind on it, is that the city is in full control of the water, that we own, that we're exchanging with PESCO. I was part of the negotiation, as was Ken, when we originally entered into that agreement. And I guess what I would say about it, and you're right, companies can change, their needs can change, but they're sending it out to power plants that, my guess, is going to be online for quite a while, and they see it as mutually beneficial. And the reason that PESCO sees this as a beneficial exchange is that they have significant losses that they incur trying to deliver CBT water out to the Pawnee Plant out between Fort Oregon and Brush. And so economically, it doesn't make sense for them, it's difficult for them to get the water, it's much more favorable for them to get the water from the city of Longmont. And so it's an arrangement that makes sense for both parties, which it normally takes. I do believe we have very feasible and viable replacement projects that I believe are comparable in cost to Windy Gap, especially if you look at sort of the entire bundled costs of any one water supply, and not just, say, the capital cost to build it upfront, but instead the ongoing operating costs and so on. So I think those, we absolutely considered all those options. I don't attend every Water Board, but I know Ken is very transparent in talking about all the studies and how we did that, and when we brought that exchange agreement forward, you know, in talking with everybody about, and certainly the council at the time, but...
So those other options that you mentioned, are they at the high quality of water that we would get from Windy Gap?
So they're a different quality, and, but they are, one thing, and I'll use the Pump Back Project as an example, it's one where we already control the reservoir, the design has been completed to a certain level, it was actually ready to go to construction, but we are holding it pending what we end up doing on Windy Gap. It is raw water that we would then exchange with the Rough and Ready Ditch and take their high-quality water at the treatment plant. And so you achieve the same goal of high-quality water at your treatment facility and taking the pressure off of your treatment plant to not put water out of the the pressure off of your treatment plant to not put water out of the treatment plant to go out onto lawns. And so that's what I was trying to say. All these projects have got pluses and minuses with them. It is lower-quality water, as we all know, coming out of Union.
Takes more time to...
But it's intended to be used differently and to achieve the same high quality at the end result at the treatment facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Dale, for your patience with city council. I think we've been discussing this for, it seems like, a year, haven't we?
That's okay. I mean, this is a big deal, guys.
Better not, better than rushing into things, but, you know, and I know that you have been working on this and planning this for at least a decade. So I appreciate all the hard work that staff has done on this. And I thank you for clarifying this. I wanted to find out if there was any other source of, I appreciate what Mr. Williams said about water we didn't own. This is the only source, though, that we're talking about of water that we, this exchange?
I think we have other exchanges. I can let Ken sort of expand on it, but I think this is by far the largest exchange that we have.
Oh, okay.
Craig, Mayor, Councilmember Christensen. What Longmont does is we have a number, we have water in Union Reservoir as well as water coming out of our wastewater treatment plant. Our largest exchange is the PESCO exchange, but we do have some other exchanges with lower water users. Usually, it's CBT water that either they can't because of restrictions on the allowable use of CBT water, or because how hard it is to get it downriver. It's usually more convenient to get, take water directly from Longmont, which we can pinpoint right into the South Platte. And so we do develop those exchanges, which we really do develop, we really do a lot of exchanges and use a lot of water out of Union Reservoir for that purpose.
Yeah, okay. I mean, this is, I see how there can be a different perspective on this, but I, and I do, of course, value the redundancy. That's really essential for any kind of system. It, whether it's, and it's one of the things that is best about our electricity and our utili, I mean, our water systems during the flood, during all kinds of things. If we hadn't had redundancy, we would have been in terrible shape. But we already have that redundancy. This would be adding another thing onto it. Nevertheless, I, so I appreciate you answering that question. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The point you made, Dale, about the pump-back system taking pressure off of our water treatment plant because we'll be using gray and raw water for outside, that struck a note with me from your Water Utility Finances report that we got in our packet, when you say it's going to take $127 million by 2026 just to maintain the systems that we've got. So it isn't just the cost of Windy Gap that we're looking at. We're also looking at this $127 million just to maintain our systems. So taking water off that water treatment plant, I think, would be really important as far as maintaining structure. So I just wanted to make that point because I don't think that the people in the audience saw that.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. How many more slides do you have, Dale?
About three.
Okay, I'll just wait till you're done and then jump in.
Good to move forward.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So of course, now I put up a slide that we have a hard time seeing. Real quickly, on the top, the areas in green, those represent rates that are already codified, okay? Some of you, maybe all of you, when you codified the rates back in 2015, did it for that five-year period out to 2019, 9% annual increases. And those were based upon the Integrated Treated Water Master Plan and the overall funding needs, primarily capital, to maintain and expand the water system, including treatment and storage and all those things. So again, Scenario A, which, if we flip back, that's your $36 million bond. It looks like we can hold rates in '17, but we would need to increase the rates in '18 by about an additional 4%, and then increase the rate another 1% in '19. Everything beyond '19, nothing's codified out there, guys. So to me, that's all open territory in what we end up doing. But what we're trying to show you, though, is a long-term impact, especially on bonding, because you have to have rates that can cover your debt service for the life of the bond. So Scenario A, you can see it has about 149% of total rate increase. Scenario B, which is the $18 million bond, no rate change, again, above what's already codified this year or in '18, then with an additional 3% in '19, above what's codified. Scenario C, which is the most rapid rate increase option, 23% for the remainder of '17 and 17% for '18, and then we get a break. We don't have an increase in '19 because once you raise your rates that high, that quickly, you're able to go that one year. And you can see on the, you know, we have the totals on the far-right side on the bottom. Turns out that, you know, Scenario B is actually more expensive over the time, and Becky can answer all those nuances of finance better than I. And then finally, Scenario D is really sort of status quo in your rates. You don't do anything with your rates beyond what you've already codified through 2019. And so the cumulative, I think one thing to look at is, so what is the cumulative impact over a shorter period, say, from '15 to '19, which is the area and the timeframe that we have codified? The highest is with Scenario C, which, again, shouldn't be shocking to anybody, that has about a 71% rate increase. The next highest is Scenario A with a 61%. The next is B at 58, and finally, D at 54. And again, you can think of 54 as sort of the base. That's what you've already approved. You can rescind it, but that's what you've approved up to now. So any questions on that that Becky can answer?
Well, you know, this all comes about as to, you know, making decisions based on a time period.
Yes.
And, you know, obviously, someone that's, you know, 83 years old doesn't care what's going to happen 10 years from now. They care about what's going to happen next year. And that's probably why we got such different results between the millennials and the senior citizens. So not too surprising. It is kind of interesting how, overall, though, at 2027, the total increase from buying, basically, Scenario D, the 8,000 acre-feet versus the 10,000, is actually pretty much the same.
And why is that? That's because we're not having to pay back the interest on that additional debt.
That's right.
So if you could, analogy would be, if you go pay cash for your house, you're always going to be best to do that.
Right.
But that's why.
But I mean, that just says, to me, if you're a long-term thinker, that going with Scenario D with the 8,000 acre-foot versus the 10,000, you would choose the 10,000 because in the long run, it's the same cost. It's 149 total versus 150% total on the cumulative out to 2027. And, you know, if you're a short-term thinker, you know, you'd probably want Scenario A. Let's say, you know, we all decided it's 10,000 foot's the right number. Obviously, Scenario A is the best because it smoothes rates. It actually costs you more than Scenario C. Scenario C is going to be the cheapest for 10,000, but Scenario A doesn't hit in the near term like in 2019. So it helps the people, you know, in the near-end terms. But overall, you know, if I put on my long-term hat, I would say, geez, you know, the smart decision here is Scenario C because it's cheapest over the long term. I mean, that's generally how I make my decisions, but because we have to think in other people's frame of reference, you know, perhaps Scenario A would be the best if, once we've decided on the 10,000. You know, another thing that I'm thinking of is when Todd Williams made those presentations a long time ago, we, and we looked at all the different sources of errors on what causes water uncertainty in terms of, you know, years of droughts and all these other things. And there was like, I don't know, 10 or 11 sources of different types of errors in that analysis. So, and some of those errors, you know, you kind of RSSed them and said, well, you know, in the worst case, that's how I came to my conclusion that 10,000 was the right number. Some of those errors are, have some correlation to them, and so it's not really fair to RSS errors that have some level of correlation to them. You have to actually add those errors together sometimes. So that would lead you to make a decision based on those errors being somewhat correlated in some cases, and that would choose you to a higher level. If you're, you know, a very conservative person and like to plan for, you know, worst, worst-case scenario. So just making some of those comments that, you know, people here maybe not have been here when we discussed the whole decision between, you know, 6, 8, and 10 many, many months ago. So, does anybody else want to? No, I think, one more?
I think we have one. I don't want to lie. Let's see. Yes, one. And then we're two questions. And guys, this is essentially the same information, but instead of showing it as percentages, we're showing it as dollars and cents based on an average usage of 9,000 gallons a month. And I don't know if we're all average here today, but that's going to vary based on your usage. And I did hear one person from the public say we should charge more when people use more water, and we are doing that. We have a tiered water structure, and you use more, you're going to pay more per gallon for that. But again, these are the numbers. I don't think I need to roll through them. We just wanted to have them for the council and the public. If there's any questions on those, we can take them, but I think they're sort of self-explanatory. And then finally, we're to council discussion and decision, and then direction on the preferred option, then we can talk about, based on what that preferred option is, what next steps might be coming up.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, I got, I have a couple of questions. First of all, how much, so this project actually started back in the '60s, correct?
Mayor Coombs and Mayor Protan Bagley, Ralph Price, former Longmont mayor, I think, filed for the water right in '67, '69? '67? I know, that's why. I got the historian here. So, and I got the financial expert. Yeah, 1967, Longmont mayor Ralph Price went and filed the Windy Gap decree. The project, it wasn't a whole lot of activity on it until the 1980s, when it went to construction. As you can imagine, there was a whole lot of issues over the decree and trying to get the decree approved, yada, yada, yada. Started construction on it in the early '80s, finished construction in the mid-'80s, '85? '85? Even I'm getting it right. And so that was sort of the timeline. And that's when debt payments started. And as you know, we, I think we make our last debt payment on the original project this year. I'm hitting everything right so far.
So how much money has Longmont spent? And so my understanding is you've got a river up there that we have rights, water rights to, but we have no place to store it. So in other words, in order to take advantage of our water rights, what we're really doing is building a bucket, right?
So, Mayor Protan Bagley, the way I look at that is Windy Gap is a junior water right, and it was started out as predominantly direct flow, although the original decree did have storage options in it. And so not unlike other junior water rights, like the Highland Ditch on the St. Brain, you have to build storage to get you through the dry years and so that you have yield when your water right is going to be called out, right? So Windy Gap is the same way. And so we've invested about $56, $58 million range. And for that, we have and will always have the right to take delivery, on average, and again, that's the key word there, of 8,000 acre-feet of water from the project. The problem with it today is that for firm planning, for a firm yield, it's zero because it does not divert in a dry year. And as you mentioned, if you can't store it somewhere, you don't have a place to put it. And so we will always have the right to take delivery of the water as we have up to now for the last, you know, 30 years.
And then, so my next question is, so I believe what staff actually told us was 6,000 was the minimum, but the range went up to 12,000, correct?
So Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, I think, over the planning horizon, it may even been higher. Ken can correct me, but I think it was as high as 16,000 at one point, very early on in the planning and the permitting. I think as it has gone through the permitting stage, and those of you that have been here for a while will remember that we advised staying at that 12,000 acre-foot level all the way through the permitting stage, which we've now completed. And then to make a decision with regards to the final participation level prior to going to construction. And so none of that's really changed, other than, yeah, when you're planning something, you're going to have a wider range, but as you get down to it, you're going to narrow in on the number.
So, and then, and then what, when was the original 12,000 acre-foot participation put into effect? What council did that? It was well over six years ago.
I'm going to refer to Ken on that one.
Remember?
We dropped from 16,000 to 13,000 around 2002, and it was around 2007 or '08 when we dropped from 13,000 to 12,000.
Okay. So, the reason I ask these questions is I sit on the Windy Gap, I'm the liaison for Windy Gap. It's a consortium of, it's a huge meeting.
Participants committee.
Yeah, it's just, it's overwhelming to see the amount of water knowledge in that room every month. And so I guess the thoughts I have are, I certainly understand, most of the people who spoke tonight, I know personally, I respect you. I agree with many of your concerns. If, in fact, those were going to happen, I'd have a huge problem with selling water to the oil and gas industry so they could frac inside Longmont. I'd have a huge problem if we were going to sell water to allow the development of open space or the development of our neighbors on our towns and our borders. But I kind of look at it as, we spent $56 million, which means that for every acre-foot we don't take advantage of, tonight, we're talking about increasing water rates, but if we decrease it from, we've already decreased it from 12 to 10, which means that that's basically $10 million that we didn't need to spend. And then if we decrease it to eight, that's 20, and if we decrease it to six, that's 30, because I'm just basically taking $56 million divided by 12 to get 1,000 acre-foot price, right? Meaning, the more, the less water we buy, the smaller our bucket, the more we're paying for storage of the water that we have. Am I wrong on that?
So Mayor Coombs and Council, Mayor Protan Bagley, excuse me, I probably wouldn't express it that way. So I'm not going to say you're wrong.
How should I express it?
So, a couple of things, is the water contract, again, we don't own the water right, per se. We have a contract, very similar to CBT. The water right is actually in the hands of the district. We have a contract right to take delivery of 8,000 acre-feet today. And there are some participants in Windy Gap that are not in the firming project, and you know, Boulder's one of them. Boulder has decided that they're going to store their Windy Gap in other ways, other than participating in this firming project. And so what I would say to that is that I wouldn't see it as a loss of value in your Windy Gap, because you already own that, you have it. Windy Gap, the firming, the Chimney Hollow, is the current project to store it. It is not large enough to firm up the entire Windy Gap project. And so in my head, at some point, there will be alternatives and additional storage that will probably be proposed, coming online, long after I'm gone. So I don't see this as the end game, I guess. And so I think you're going to always own those contracts for 8,000 acre-feet, 80 units. You only lose that, if you will, if you would somehow abandon it. somehow abandon it, or somehow sell it, convey it.
My question, so the 56 million, so you've got the water rights and you've got the firming project. What I'm saying is that 56 million, was that not just for the firming project? Or is that also the water rights?
The 56 million was to build the facilities associated with the original Windy Gap project. So the, the diversion dam on the, on the Colorado River, the pumping station, the pipeline, whatever ancillary facilities. It was to build those facilities to divert and deliver the water up to Green Bay.
So where, so the, the thought, my fear or concern was, did we increase rates on citizens of Longmont earlier in order to now only walk away from their sacrifice? But that didn't happen?
No. I don't believe there's any, any cause for that. Again, you're going to continue to own the Windy Gap that you have. You will, another way of looking at it, I suppose, would be the firming ratio. You own 8,000 acre-feet. If you firm at 10,000, you are firming your 80 units at something over one. I don't know what the math is, like 1.2, 1.4. If you go at 8,000, you're firming at a ratio of one to one. It's, it's a different calculus, I guess is what I'm saying. I look, and, and then when I take into consideration all of the other storage alternatives that Longmont has, whether it be Ralph Price, or Union, or Birch, or Terry Lake, the different reservoirs, it's a pretty robust system, I guess is the way I'd say it.
Okay, thank you. I just, I'm not going to ask you questions, but I don't, I want to conserve water. I want to make sure that we're not selling to frackers, not to development. And I like option A. Just, you bond it all out. It's cheap. You keep the 10,000. And I think that the voters can just decide.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think you hit on something that might help the folks in the audience with questions understand our decision, original decision on 10,000 acre-feet. And that was that study that showed us the range of possibilities. When you look at the range of possibilities, and you take that information, along with the Water Board's recommendation, and your recommendation of staff, and you weigh all those things, all those pieces of information, that's how we got to the 10,000 acre-feet. That information was not in our packet for people to see. Perhaps we should have that study published again, so people can take a look at it, and have all the information that we had when we made that original decision months and months ago.
I do have that information available, if you are interested.
Sure. No, I don't need it. I'm just saying that I think the public could use that information to see how we've come to our decision with the 10,000 acre-feet originally. I also think that in looking at all the options we have before us tonight, B is the most expensive, C puts the biggest burden on our current residents, and A will allow us to spread that cost out through, throughout the years, rather than, than the biggest burden being on our current residents. So I would agree with Councilmember Bagley that A would be my, my option as well.
No, I don't think we've had an opportunity to speak from Jeff Moore. Do you want to let Jeff go?
Sure.
And then you can go. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Thanks for your time this afternoon, Dale, when we talked, because I think that really cleared things up for me. One of the things that really comes out in these, in this water studies was, the water demand evaluation from 2012, was the variability in the total water demand forecast. The, the range was 3,076 acre-feet to 13,505 acre-feet. I'm, but as an engineer, variability is the opposite of certainty. And when we have that much variability, I, I really don't feel comfortable with going with minimums, maximums, or even averages. The average on that is like 8,300 acre-feet, if you average those two numbers. The recommendation was 500, 5,637 acre-feet, so that's the 6,000, I'm assuming. Some of the other variables in this, climate impact numbers are really small in this whole assumptions. There's a table ES-7, it's got 15 assumptions on it. They're at, in 2012, the effect of climate change was less defined. And I, I don't think that there's enough of a adjustment up in water demand needs for the, either the irrigation needs, or the uncertainty of where the precipitation may fall, whether it be on the west slope or the east slope. If it falls on the west slope, and we don't firm our Windy Gap, we're not going to have water as much as we might want to have. Our native basin rights, I assume, are on the east side of the divide. And that could kind of leave us in wanting for water. One of the other assumptions is ES-4, the table ES-4, a list of assumptions for reference for forecast. No significant high-water use industrial users will be added to the system. Well, we just landed a Smucker's plant. I'm sure they're going to use a fair amount of water. The regulatory climate, that's always a question mark. We don't know what's going to happen with either federal or state government on where we go with our water law. It's always going to be an uncertainty. It's going to be a big fight, because it is property, right? But it doesn't seem to matter a lot of times when the federal government goes in there and says, well, the Colorado River needs X number more acre-feet, and we don't have it. And I guess, with the variables, the uncertainty, I'm really not comfortable with just going with that recommendation. And there was, those are some of the things that I've looked at to go into this discussion. One of the big assumptions is build-out. It's the comprehensive plan back in 2003 had it built out at 115,000. That may have changed a little bit to 117,000. But people are moving to Colorado. They're going to want to live somewhere. And while we consider our Longmont area planning, our Longmont planning area, if we use current construction, that's probably a pretty good number. But that doesn't mean that we won't go up. That could increase our population even 130,000 or 140,000, which creates a different scenario for our water needs. So I guess that I also, I've been on the Water Board as a liaison, so I've been hearing the discussions of the board members. I understand their concern about the 5,000 acre-feet from Public Service Company in exchange. If we lose that contract for whatever reason, that's going to create a scramble for water. And I'm also concerned our population projections are too low. I've said that already, but I'm going to say it again. And I'm not sure we factored in all of the needs for what can happen around climate change. Union Pump Back is a good backup plan. And I think that, you know, that can bring up any extra water we may need in the future. So, it is a different quality of water that may require additional treatment plant options. And being a phased project, it's also something that can fill in gaps as they develop over time. So, I'm supporting option A as well. The question I have is, if we don't get approval for the bond, what happens to our water rates? And what are, where does that go from there?
You had a question? Or do you guys want to keep talking? That was going to be under next steps. So the next step would be, again, depending on your direction tonight, if it is a bond option, to prepare the bond ballot language, working with our finance and legal counsel, and bond counsel, and bringing that forward for you to approve, which would need to be first reading, in the first regular meeting in August. Just timelines, so that you can have it adopted in August to get it on the ballot.
Okay. Well, that's, when we talked this afternoon, you mentioned financing on the 8,000 level could be a little bit higher than that. Can you, said it with development activity, we may have extra cash in the bank?
Right. And I think we mentioned that in the communication, that currently cash on hand would finance 8,300 acre-feet, again, with no rate increases. And that in the event that we received additional cash in lieu, and/or surplus TAP fee revenues, those could be directed by action of council to increase above what you can currently pay for with the cash you have in reserves. That's what we were trying to say in there. Oh, and you still have to do the $6.1 million bond.
Yes, yes. Okay. So, that is, that would create another situation where we could consider, if we could get to 8,300, we can still satisfy the Water Board's suggestion of, or recommendation of 10,000 acre-feet, if we were to, just to build the first phase of the Union Reservoir Pump Back project, and pick up another 670 acre-feet of raw water to be used on city property for irrigation. And that would make more water available. So there is another way to get to 10,000, as I see it.
The other way of skinning the cat, as they say.
Yes.
That's what we talked about this afternoon. Councilmember Moore?
So, if, so that's just another option I want to throw out there. If we don't want to raise rates, and we want to still get to 10,000 acre-feet, we can do it at a lower cost than the $47 million it takes for Windy Gap. Because the cost of construction for 47, or 10,000 acre-feet is estimated at 47 million. And the cost of construction for 8,300 would be around 39 million, according to my numbers, which is 8 million, which would probably cover the cost of the.
It's more than the cost of the first phase.
More than cover the first phase of the Union Reservoir Pump Back. So, something else to think about?
Councilmember Christensen?
I would vote for D. Originally, I was in favor of the 6,000 feet, because that is what a staff of professional engineers who studied the risk analysis for drought, and prediction scenarios for water needs at build-out, that is what staff recommended. And that's what I think makes sense to me, because they are professional engineers. I've seen, we've all seen Cal Youngberg's presentation on the very analysis software that you have. And we know that staff is very competent, and has been working on this for a long, long time. We've also heard the testimony of a former mayor, Roger Lang, and a former city manager, Gordon Pedro. I, I am not willing to ignore everybody for some idea that we need to grab as much as we can. It's true that our predecessors provided wisely for our needs, but they didn't provide extravagantly for our needs. And I think that's good to keep in mind. We are, I think, most of us, very thrifty. Mr. Director Radamaker has stated before that we have saved a lot of, we have conserved a lot of water in the past 10 years. And I think people understand that. We do understand it's a high plains desert, and I believe there are a lot of possibilities for working on that. And also, as Councilman Moore said, there are other options for increasing water, if we need that option. So, I would still vote for the 8,000 acre-feet. I thought that was a decent compromise. And that's what I'm voting for.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Dale, just a couple of things I want to make clear. The 56 million that we've already put into Windy Gap had nothing to do with our participation level. Is that correct? It was part of the construction of the infrastructure?
Correct. That was the original project.
Okay, thank you. When we are looking at, when we're looking at Union Reservoir, and your 2012, by the way, I want to thank you for this information. It really, it really cleared up a lot of things. You had said, or your, your department had said that we need 32,730 acre-feet. With the engineering of Union Reservoir, that would bring that up to 32,000 acre-feet?
At the maximum enlargement, it would go that high. I think it's more likely that if and when we enlarge, that it would be maybe not to that maximum level. Although we've been buying property, be able to go to the maximum level if needed.
When you, when you predicted that we would need 32,730 acre-feet, in that prediction, was the 6,000 acre-feet of Windy Gap part of that? Was that?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it a prediction, but I would call it.
No prediction, I said that wrong.
An analysis.
Analysis, okay.
Prediction sounds a little more, I'm not a good predictor.
No.
But the analysis, correct, is 32,750 is the total anticipated demand of water at the build-out of the comprehensive plan. So that's correct.
Okay.
The fact that Union could be enlarged at that same amount are really apples and oranges. Because one is a firm yield of water supply, the other's just a storage of water. And they're, don't equate those two. You would have to look at the yield of an enlarged Union. That is what would be relevant to the 32,750. But the 6,000 acre-feet of participation in Windy Gap was the recommendation from the 2012 study, that if we participated at that level, that we would reach and maintain 32,750 at build-out through a seven-year, one-in-100-year drought scenario.
Okay. So you've taken care of the drought analysis, the, the city demands, and how we would get the water filtered and use the raw water. Use it, use all of it. So, I'm impressed with what, what our city staff has done. The, the one thing that has bothered me about what the Water Board has said, was when I did talk to John Caldwell in December, January, his first statement was, we could sell this water. So, I'm still wondering where we're going to sell this water. And that concerns me a lot. I know that when it goes to PRPA, we have no idea where it goes. And nor probably should we. But are we purchasing water on the backs of our residents to sell elsewhere? And for that, I just can't vote for that. Because we would actually be charging our residents for someone else's proliency. I, I also think that the 6,000 acre-feet, from what your analysis is, would handle everything that the city staff has put in their analysis. I do understand also the Water Board and city staff looking at the supply differently, and the exchanges. But that still is our water. Whether we're exchanging it or not, it still is in, in our control. So, I'm going to make, when we, this first came out, I, I voted for the 8,000 acre-feet of water. And I'm going to stick with that, with bonding the whole thing. So I move that we participate in the Windy Gap project at the 8,000 acre-feet level, bonding all of it.
Can I ask the clarification, just real, not to confuse the issue?
Okay.
The 8,000 acre-feet, when you say bonding all of it, are you meaning the $6.1 million bond that council?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Because there was no.
Exactly. I'm sorry, I said that wrong.
Our analysis bonding.
That we bond the six, let me amend that motion. That we participate in the Windy Gap project at the 8,000 acre-feet level, bonding the $6.1 million amount.
Okay, we've got a motion, and it's been seconded. There's still discussion. Councilmember, are you done? Would you like to?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It was alluded to earlier that we weren't thinking about residents. I mean, we're residents too. We We, I look at this and like, yeah, it's going to be expensive. But you know, to have infrastructure in place and knowing where, kind of like, whether it's electricity or especially water, you know where your water's coming from, you have a good source, you might want to pay for it. You don't want to be worried about it later on when it's very hot and dry and water's not coming in. The one thing that was, again, as I said, was alluded to, that we weren't thinking of those less fortunate. What plans do we have as far as, and we've talked about this before, to help those folks that, that need help with their water bills?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Santos, Becky Doyle, rate analyst for Public Works and Natural Resources. So this year, we changed our water rebate program to open it up to some additional residents and saw increased applications for that. In the previous, the first year of the water rebate, we had very low applications, but this year we saw a lot more. And we do have some direction to come back with some options for changing that rebate program to a monthly discount, which is something that we hope to do once this part of the water financing plan is finalized. So that is something to consider.
All right. And the other question that was asked, and as Councilmember Peck also mentioned as well. Harold, who's approached the city? Are we in negotiations to sell water to anyone outside the city, fracking people, other municipalities? I wasn't aware that, there was a, I saw on a Facebook post, on my personal Facebook page, that looking at, I think it was Longmont Roar and Indivisible Longmont, that the conservative members of council were going, are wanting to sell water to frackers. Have, I'm trying to figure, you know, I guess that's the elephant in the, no, I'm sorry.
Just, okay, what's, what's your point of order? Let's hear what you're
My point of order is that Councilmember Santos said the conservative, conservative members on council
Quoting.
Are wanting to sell, are concerned about selling water to frackers. I think that that is a misstatement, and I would like him to restate that.
No, I'm actually
I think he's probably just quoting what he saw on his Facebook page pervading that.
That's what I'm doing, Mayor Coombs. It was a quote from, I believe, either Longmont Roar or Longmont Indivisible, that the conservative members of council want to sell. That's the rumor, that we want to, members, those members of council, whoever those conservative members of council are, want to sell water to fracking operations. So Harold, have you heard of anything? I've heard at least one member of council say they would not sell to outside entities, whether it be cities or organizations. And also, someone, also, a member of council also said that they wouldn't sell to fracking operations as well. But have we been in negotiations?
Well, in order to sell water, that has to go before a vote of the people.
Correct.
In addition, council recently adopted a series of ordinances. And Dale, do you want to go over those ordinances?
Correct. City Manager Dominguez, you, you got, city council updated your code of ordinances, seems like a while ago, to prohibit leasing of water to a certain, certain areas east of us. And in that same code change, it was, the current code is also a prohibition against leasing of water for oil and gas activities, either in or outside of the city.
Correct. So, and I would, so that is the law for Longmont. And as people say, it can change. But I would pretty much assume that a large contingent of people, some of those in this audience, would be, if council changed that, they would be here again. So that point of order was out of order, so. Now, it, it's interesting, talking, again, talking infrastructure. Do you, I have somewhat of a concern regarding PESCO. Although, you know, it seems that it's not that big of a concern, but you know, if you don't have, if you can't control your participation, or it can be terminated by someone else, that's not control. I believe in having good infrastructure for the city, not looking, and yes, will it be painful to raise rates on residents, including myself? Of course. I have two young daughters. You know, trying to get them to turn off the lights and the water at the same time sometimes is a little difficult. But dad's on them all the time. But those councils before and mayors before this one made great decisions for the city of Longmont. And not, not only thinking about themselves and how it's going to be painful for themselves, but also how it will benefit the future generations of this community. We are that generation at this time. And it's encompassed on us to make good decisions for, for the future, for the next generations, my kids and potentially my grandkids. So we'll see how this first vote goes. I don't, I don't see passing, but we'll see.
You know, I'd like to just point out that according to your figures, whether we went with Scenario A, at 2027, the total water rate increase over all those years is 149.2%. And Scenario C, where we bond, it's 149.6%. So it's, it's a wash when you put on the long-term, in terms of people's water rates. You know, and at 2027, you're sitting there, well, jeez, people are going to look back and go, jeez, you know, our water rates have, you know, are the same as what we would have if we'd have got 10,000 and bonded out. It seems like that would be, in my mind, a poor decision based on making decisions based on, you know, 10-year, 10, 11-year lookout. It's just my, my comments. You know, I, you know, we use less than 50 gallons per person per day because we have a zero-scape yard. We do all the, the right things. You know, I take three-minute showers instead of 20-minute showers. I don't have teenage girls that camp out. And so, you know, it's easy, you know, so people do have some control. They can take some responsibility and figure out, you know, they could grow fescule grasses instead of Kentucky bluegrass for their yards. And there's all kinds of things people can do to save water. And I think we can really, need to work on, you know, strengthening our programs for utilities to help people that are on fixed income, so. But that's a separate issue from what we're trying to decide tonight. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't have any problems. I've got three young boys. They don't shower at all. The, the, and I'm just kidding, their mother makes them shower. I guess the, the one thing that I, I might be remembering this wrong, and the, the statement has come up several times tonight, both by people and members of the, members of our community during public invited-to-be-heard, by Mr. Pedro, by council members. Why, did, did city, I guess I, I just don't recall, or I don't understand, was the recommendation 6,000, or was it a range? What was city staff's, because I remember a range. And other people are remembering, city, you guys are experts, and we only need 6,000.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, after the 2012 report came out, and it identified 6,000, that is when you changed your capital program for Windy Gap to fund at the 6,000-foot level, always keeping open the issue of final participation until now. And so it's, it's always a water supply planning issue, but you were financing, we were financing for 6,000 following the 2012 study.
Okay. So Ken and Dale, how much do we need?
6,000. And just, if I can expand on that, I, it's, I don't want to be flippant about it. I'm, I'm equally concerned about the water supply of the city. This is my hometown, and my career has been here. And so I don't think any of us here would recommend anything that would in any way shortchange this community going forward. We take that very seriously, and we, and frankly, we have studied this stuff to death. If I ask Ken to look at it again, he'd probably quit. So we've looked at this stuff over time, we've looked at it in detail. We always know that we have options, which is the strength of our community and of our water system. And we are, we will, you will always hear me recommend that you keep those options viable. You keep, you maintain your diligence on your reservoir conditional decrees. You maintain, you stay vigilant what's happening at state and federal level. As I told Councilmember Moore, our biggest issue going forward is not to get more water. It's, it's probably going to be to hold what we have. And, and to not have it go to some of the growing cities and areas around us that would love to have the water supply in the situation that our community has. And so you ask me what we need, I'm always going to ground back into the studies. And that includes looking at the variability tables and all the assumptions in there, because there were 15 of them, as you correctly noted, Councilmember Moore and Mayor. And they all have different levels of control by the city, with the exception of the climate change ones. And I, I think we have looked at both climate change impact on demand through higher temperatures, climate change impacts on supply through changes in precipitation. Are we right? I don't know. I don't know. But I think we've used the best science that we have available in making those decisions.
I, I get, thank you. All right. So I guess, I mean, if the option, if 6,000 is not on the table tonight, but it's just eight or 10, and the rates are basically the same under either option, I'd rather have more for the same amount. I guess that's my thinking.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. One thing that I neglected to mention is, as, and I, this goes back to climate change, which I think is, is happening. I'm not going to debate why it's happening, but it is happening. Higher temperatures, less precipitation in some areas, more precipitation in others. One thing that really concerns me is another potential source of population growth in this region is migration. From areas without water that can no longer support the populations they have, or the growth of their population, to an area that does have resources. Now, that's happened in, probably, it's probably happened in historical times, that way before there was even water rates. But at the same time, that's something that we need to consider as a potential outcome of the uncertainty in climate change. And the fact that we have this rate, or this demand forecast study that has a range of 30,000, or 3,000 acre feet to 13,500 acre feet concerns me, that we're just going to lock in a number that's less than half of that recommendation. So I said it again. One, one additional item is that the consequences of making the wrong, a bad decision here under not enough water is pretty, pretty critical to the growth of Longmont, as well as additional projects that need to be built, additional rate increases, additional O&M costs, additional infrastructure maintenance costs. So having a, having a single project that has the potential to serve the full deeds reduces all those, all those operating costs and future water rates. So that's my last comment on that for tonight.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. There was a lot of talk about conservation of water, and, but I just want to point out is that this is a bill that we have to pay. If you, if you conserve enough to bring your water rate down, the bill is still there. So I'm always wondering what our Plan B is to pay it off. If, if in fact, everybody does conserve to the point where we're saying you should do. Are we going to wa, raise rates again on top of that to continue to pay this bill? And it's really nice to talk about everybody conserving, et cetera, but when you have a visa bill, it doesn't mean that you, you can give away what you bought and you still don't have to pay the bill. You, you have, we have to pay that, and that is my biggest concern. Well, one of them. And the fact that we're buying more than we actually need. If we have an extreme climate change, there's not going to be any water to put in that storage, if it's that extreme. So all of these are assumptions, and I don't think that we should make a good policy just based upon assumptions. The analysis that you did, Dale, for the 6,000 acre feet and re-engineering Union Reservoir meets our demands. I mean, you've stated that several times. So again, I, I think the 8,000 is adequate in, in the discussion that you've given us. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion, it's been seconded. Let's, basically, the motion is for Scenario D, 8,000, with the $6.1 million bond, without And it fails two to five with Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Bagley, Mayor Coombs, and gave, Councilmember Santos and Councilmember Finley descending. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move Scenario Number A, or Letter A.
All right. Scenario A has been moved and seconded. Let's vote.
Can we discuss that for a minute?
Sure, I guess we can, we can discuss it.
Does that include bonding the financing? I just want to make that clear.
It's the $35 million.
So that the residents know what we're, what we're voting on. Okay.
Yes. And that requires a, going to the people for a vote.
For a vote. All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's vote. And that passes 52 with Councilmember Christensen. Councilmember Peck descending.
So as not to belabor, so thank you for your direction. So the next steps, as I alluded to, will be to come forward with ballot language. Council, you'll need to review and approve that. We will get to work on that immediately. We've actually started some rough drafting ideas, and we'll have to get together and get a time to get that in front of you.
So since council decided to bond, direct us to pursue the bonding option, really looks like we're going to, we're going to bring that on the 25th of July. We'll try to bring it on the 18th of July, but I'm not sure everyone's going to be here. And that's kind of a, a time crunch for us. So we'll shoot for the 25th. We will then have to be back the following week on the, or we'll have to be back on the 8th.
August 8th.
August 8th, to, to put that on the agenda so we can make the, the ballot for November. At the same time, we're going to talk about the other items as well.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for a final call, public invited-to-be-heard. Anybody like to speak? Yeah, just come on down and, you know.
Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive. Thank you for this discussion. Now that you've decided that you're going to go to the voters, back in March of 2016, when you went through this process and decided that you were going to go for 10,000 acre feet, or you were looking at that recommendation from the Water Board. At that time, I made a statement that if you're going to stay with 10,000 acre feet, you need to go out and really have the citizens have a chance to understand what's going on. I have to admit, until tonight, you haven't done that a very good job. So therefore, I'm assuming you're going to figure out some way of having the citizens understand this complex issue. Because if you don't, and they're faced with a sales tax increase and millions of dollars worth of bonds for your facilities, something is going to fail because it's going to seem like you're dumping a whole bunch of things on us. So therefore, I think it's incumbent upon you guys to figure out how you're going to bring your citizens along and have us have a chance of wanting to support this. So that's my big concern. My other concern, or several concerns in my few minutes, is what happens if it fails? Some of you won't be on this council at that point, so therefore, you won't be making that decision. But are you then going to force upon the citizens a 10,000 acre feet decision? You're just going to cash finance it and shove all that? You're just going to cash finance it and shovel all that? That's a very big issue for us to understand. We need to understand what those options are as part of this education process because that's going to determine how people may be voting. Mayor, I'm concerned that you, you talk about long-term thinking versus the citizens and what the impact is on the short term. And that, I think, is a big mistake on this type of thing. Long-term, for some of us, may be only 10 years maximum, so it doesn't matter if all of these things are about the same in 10 or 15 or 20 years. What's going to be the impact in the short term? And since that light came on, my final point is, I don't see the consternation or the reason for it on the part of the council members when some people are saying, we don't know where you're going to sell the extra water that you're going to have at 10,000 acre feet. No one's making a charge that you're doing such and such. The fact of the dish, you have an ordinance in place that says such and such, two weeks, and that ordinance can disappear, and we know that. So therefore, to say we have an ordinance and it's a law right now, doesn't mean that sets anything in concrete. So if you really want to do that, put it to the vote and have the voters say, if you're going to sell the water to any other use, then it has to be by voted people, then that gives us real control. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Gabe Santos. I live at 1088 Button Rock Drive. Last week, it was brought to your and my attention that, uh, our collective attention that an email was used by council, a personal email was used by a council member for city business. Apparently, this was done to circumvent open records. And as a council member and a resident, I, I did an open records request because I find this action to be dubious and evasive. The only reason to, to use personal email for city business is not to be transparent. That is the issue, not what's in the email. That is the issue. Now, I got word from the city that those public records on a private, on a private email cannot be obtained because conveniently, the computer crashed. And as the church lady would say, how convenient. Now, a council member and a member of, of the public have now alluded to three male members of council are sexist. That's incredible. So now, instead of, now it's, I, I'm insulted by that. I've been called many things, things while I've been on council. But now it's the shift of blame from the council member who violated the public trust is to make false accusations on others. And as I just said, during my tenure on council and before I was on council and running as a candidate, I've been called many horrible things. You're a Tea Party. You're a conservative. You're a Republican. You don't believe in, uh, equal rights for, for residents, or you, you hate composting, things of that nature, hateful things, things that my children have heard. I'm sorry, I, I have a floor. Thank you. However, I will continue to speak out when members of council violate the public trust. And I'm not done with my open records request on getting those emails because the public has the right to know. As it was said in the paper, Councilmember Peck told me to use her personal email because the Times Call looks at our city email. That is elusive. That is not transparent. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else like to speak at final call, Public Invited to Be Heard? Okay, I'll know, um, whoops.
Joan Peck, 1935 Spuce Avenue. Um, my external hard drive died, died on June 16th, and I have several emails from the company that tried to, um, fix it, basically. That's the way it goes. And if you want to look at my emails, have at it. Valerie, you do have those, uh, I sent you the receipts from the company that tried to restore my external hard drive, just as an explanation to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for mayor and council comments. I think I, I will start, um, you know, I, I really totally love and respect, uh, Gordon Pedro, but, you know, I, I was very sensitive to this issue on short versus long-term, and that's why I chose option A versus option C, because option C obviously was the, the cheapest long-term of the 10,000-foot, but option A was, smoothed the rates and, uh, you know, it cost us more, but it was the right decision because, so I, I didn't put on the blinders when I made my decision on long-term versus short-term. I just made a personal comment that generally I make, my decisions are always long-term. You know, I'm just the way, I've never bought in a car on time. I always bought used cars. You know, I'm just, I always plan for the long-term. And sometimes, you know, with water or with power, we have to make decisions that are based on long-term because, you know, if you're going to build a new power plant, um, you know, it takes seven years to go through the permitting process, so, um, I'm just very conservative financially and always plan. But I am very, very sensitive to some of the comments that were brought up for, um, you know, a 23% rate increase in 2017 would be really hard for HOAs and stuff, and that's why, you know, I thought that the 10,000, the scenario A was the best, so, anyway, that's, that's my comments. I really do appreciate the, um, what Tinker Mill did for 4th of July. They had a wonderful festival, um, and, uh, fortunately, fortunately for me, Councilmember Santos wasn't there because I was in a dunk tank. But, but there was a, a ringer, a little kid, man, he got that thing about four or five times in a row, and that water was icy cold. So, anyway, I'd like to take my hats off to what the Tinker Mill is, is doing and how well they're integrated into the community and really thank them for having a great picnic and, uh, party out there. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm sorry I missed the meeting last week. It sounded very exciting, and, um, I did, I did watch it, and I, the one comment, the only comment I want to make is, the three men who are mentioned as being sexist, I've never, ever, ever felt that way on council. I've never been treated that way on council by any of those men, and I find it that offensive. I also find it offensive that folks don't obey the rules and of, uh, the rules that we're supposed to obey. So, um, I respect all of you. I thank you for your service, and I, I thank Councilmember Bagley for bringing this to our attention. And once again, I would, uh, request that we all follow the rules and be transparent. That's what we're elected to do.
Councilmember Christensen.
I would just like people to remember the way Karen Banker, Katie Witt, Sarah Levison, Polly Christensen, all of us have been treated repeatedly on this council. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I wasn't going to bring this up tonight. I wasn't. The, uh, the, uh, the, uh, if it, Councilmember Peck, if I, if I was too harsh last week, it wasn't my intention to hurt your feelings.
I think that we have gone over and over this enough, and it really wasn't anything on the agenda. We can stick to the agenda. Everybody has, uh, used and abused this discussion. I get it. You get it. Let's just end it, please. Thank you. Everything else that is going on should be done offline. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you. I, I believe that the point of order was out of order, but I will respect your wishes. And I will just say, uh, sorry that we're all arguing, but I respect Councilmember Christensen for speaking up for her friend, her fellow couns, uh, council member. Uh, no hard feelings there at all. Um, I regret the, the tone and the tenure that we've had the last couple of weeks. And, uh, just from, uh, and I know you want to handle it offline, and we can do that. But I also want to say that I think, uh, in retrospect this last week, I guess really what set me off was, or not set me off, what made me want to respond is, is, uh, maybe I don't have a thick skin. You know, people always say, you need to have a thick skin on council. No, I don't. Every single one of us, I've said it time and time again, we get $1,000 a month to come and do this crap. And, uh, we have to put up with it, with each other, with citizens, and, uh, sometimes it, it gets a little rough. And so, uh, uh, I'll stop now.
Okay. City manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City attorney, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.